I am going to call this meeting for the Mont Vernon School Board to order. It is 5:30 of noon. So excited. We are lucky enough to have some teachers and staff present with us this evening. So we're just gonna let you kick it off and take us into your very colorful presentation.
So I can just sort of do a quick intro here. I just want to thank our specials team for coming out tonight. I know we had talked back in December about the specials quickly, and it would be great to have them come out, introduce some new faces. And so this is a great opportunity tonight, we think, to showcase some of the work that we've been doing this year in our specials. Just a reminder that this team here is mostly part-time, actually. Patty is our librarian. Patty is full-time and does a library class that students cycle through. She also does a lot of teaming with teachers as they implement units with students and very tech savvy. So you'll hear about library tonight, but I'll start down the line. We have Catherine Montalbano. She is our Spanish teacher. And I will say, interesting, you know, the span K to six. And just watching students as they learn Spanish through that, through that time of seven years, introduction in kindergarten, and then by sixth grade, they're really almost prepping for that Spanish one course they'll get in, in middle school down the hill. So, thank you, Catherine. Jackie Ward, our music teacher, welcome and thank you, Jackie. There's a lot of hype about music this fall. Jackie's come in, done a fantastic job. You'll see, and actually, you're gonna actually live through a little bit of her, her class tonight. So thank you, Jackie. Amy, here is our PE teacher and really dynamic, has come in, hit the ground running. Does a lot of, lot of variety for students in PE from some of the old-school kind of games that you probably remember, to some fitness training and things like that, that are, that are really, really fun to watch. And then Christie here is our art teacher. Christie, very creative, very creative brain. And also, you, we've talked a little bit about the drama theater arts program is also involved in that as an advisor. So thank you, thank you, Christie. So without further ado, thank you, Catherine, and thank you, team.
Okay, yeah. So I'm first. Nice to meet you. So again, my name is Catherine Montalbano. And I came to MBDS before I was at MBDS. I was an immigration attorney at a law firm in Lawrence, Massachusetts. When the pandemic struck, my kids were at home a lot and started teaching them a little bit of Spanish. And so through that, it sort of led me to be interested in teaching and then had an interview with Christine, and here I am. I grew up in a bilingual household. My dad's Guatemalan and my mom's from the United States. And through both of their experiences, I ended up living for periods of time in Guatemala. So I would say a lot of my Latin American culture and language is really reflected in my past experiences. But we will soar together this year to Tom. For K through one, I'm really just looking at vocabulary acquisition and just song-based learning. We do a lot of that. They love, they generally love anything that we do, but they, I've been really impressed with the progress that they've made so far. For second grade, I'm looking on building some vocabulary and developing some comprehension. So if I'm asking them questions, they're able to kind of respond to me. In all the levels, especially four through six, I'm looking for them to be able to follow my conversation in Spanish. So that's the most important to me. The last part of that will be them being able to speak back to me in Spanish. But as long as they're able to follow what I'm saying in Spanish, I'm happy to do that. But I wanted to show you some of the work and some of the fun that we have in our classes. Buenos dias, clase. So. When we're not. When we're not doing Spanish language, like I said, we're learning about Hispanic culture. This book is the ABCs of Guatemala. So it talks about some places and things that are significant to me, and they're beautiful to the world. So we talked about Beca Cipla. And we also talk about Mayan civilization and sculptures and what that means for people there and also volcanoes. And what this kind of Mayan Indian look actually means to people there. So for me, learning the culture actually helps just give them a different perspective, be able to compare what their lives look like versus what others' lives look like, and also be sensitive to others who are coming into the community or that they might encounter the future of different backgrounds. And they've been super eager to help me in decorating for Dia de los Muertos, which is Day of the Dead, and also for my Feliz Navidad, which they ended up doing some plain set-ins for me. They ended up doing flowers, marigolds. We kept it really close to the traditions, Mexican traditions. And they also ended up doing some pinata ornaments for their home trees. And just as an extra incentive, not that they really need one, but as an extra incentive when they're volunteering in class, we're based on a reward system. So I end up giving out tickets, and if you earn a certain number of tickets, you end up getting prizes like this that we end up talking about. Where did the leather come from? How did they weave together these change purses? So my goal is to basically inspire them to take interest in cultures that are not of their own. And so far, I've been very proud with the progress and happy with how excited they've been.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ms. Gary. I teach library.
There's an agenda, as it turns out. And I'm sorry, I misunderstood a little bit in terms of sequence. There, there's a work session that they have to engage in, and then we're gonna have to come back for the, for the presentation.
But I'm very passionate about hearing what you gotta say.
So we're gonna break into.
The board has a, the board has a public hearing at six. That's like publishing the newspaper. Very big deal for, late for, and they need to do a couple of things before that. So unfortunately, we don't have any more time.
Okay.
Right now. So, but I'm so sorry. It's my fault for scheduling it wrong.
No, that's okay. Do you want us to make a video out of it and provide it to you so you could see by video? I can do that too. Or actually, Tom has the presentation.
So this thing's going until about 6:30, 6:45. So completely, we can chat.
Okay. When we break at six, if you guys wanna.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Really cute kid on your. All right, so.
Sorry about that.
Sorry. I know. It's terrible. I feel bad putting the kibosh on it, but.
No, I had to be done.
Is Amy coming or is she in?
Oh, she's unavailable tonight. I will fill in the best I can.
Okay.
How are we doing on the slide deck? Did everybody get there?
I did. There's no, I mean, to be honest with you, this year is very basic.
Yeah.
But there's really nothing that stands out. It's just a matter of presenting a very miniscule increase. Talked about why we wanted to keep things status quo later. So just being very cognizant of what's going on in the community, with building projects, just like what, I was trying to keep everything down as small as possible. I think that's the overwhelming message we should share. Yeah, the rest is just presenting the national budget.
Too much confluence with the, the middle school subject? Because when I'm looking at like the chatter and whatnot, I see a lot of like budget and middle school conversations overlapping. Well, we really don't have anything to say about it this evening. We haven't been presented with the recommendations of the committee yet. That's pending. So I mean, that is kind of an ongoing conversation. It's certainly something that you can hear about, but there's no. We, we don't have information to have a really informed discussion tonight about that. That's my expectation. I mean, we're looking at you, Jess and Stephen to make sure that you're.
No, I think that's the response. I highly doubt we'll get a question about it, but if it does come up, like that's the response.
Did anybody want to take any particular sections of this to, on a years like we've done it eight years past where I run through it and then kind of open it up? And or members, you can chime in where you feel passionate.
We'll give Jess deck slide two through 11. I'll do slide number 12. Kristen will do 13 through.
I understand the level right now.
However, you want to deal with it.
So there were two things Amy suggested you folks would want to do during this session. One is revise your default budget based on the information she sent about. So revising your default, the default previously included a fuel cost increase that can't be included in the default. So there's a new default number. So you have to do that before the public, or suggested you do that before the public hearing.
Okay.
And then the other was the $15,000 removal potential of 15,000 for the new math program to be moved to S or three. You guys can do that before the budget hearing or have the budget hearing and then do it after. The slide deck right now assumes that you do it after the budget hearing. So the slide deck will not have all the changes, you know, associated with that.
So we can't go higher, but we can go lower. So that's correct. So I know that was a follow-up issue for you to sort of, are we gonna have the ability to do that and successfully accomplish it?
We're feeling really confident about that. We got like a preliminary approval from the DOE. We're just waiting for final approval from that. And, you know, I can't imagine we wouldn't. And if for some reason we didn't, we also get REIT funds. And those, those are our rural education funds that are probably the most flexible grant funds that we have. So for some reason, we couldn't get approval for that. I'm confident we could through REIT. So I feel comfortable. We don't know that exact allocation, but I feel comfortable with the budget. We're moving forward with removing that. And I'm confident we can make that work.
I'm trying to find Amy's original email. Do you know the document that we need to add now into the proposed?
Yeah, so the, I have both. So the, the new default number is, is already in the presentation. It's 5,829,579. That's the new default number. The proposed number right now is 5,888,250, and it will go to 5,873,250. So take out 15,000. What are this 15,000 difference? Yeah, the difference between two.
Yeah.
So that closes the gap between the default and proposed by $15,000 from 48,000 to 43. So if you plan to do that, it, there's not, you could certainly mention it during the presentation that, in fact, this is our proposed budget, but the board's likely to remove another $15,000 for it after this to come forward. If you, if you wanted to, I could make some of the changes to the presentation to reflect that the $2,000 change if you want.
Yeah, let's just do it. Just so we're not, we're going out there with the most accurate sort of version. That's my opinion. Instead of us going back and saying you're a changer.
I will.
So the numbers in the presentation will be correct.
I'm doing it right now as we speak. I don't promise that I won't make a mistake. Yeah, so I would suggest a motion for both, the default and proposed.
Okay, so I make a motion to change the proposed budget as stipulated by the superintendent.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
What was the date Amy sent that email?
With the presentation or? The 16th of December.
Yeah, I got 12:15, actually. Yeah, you were like, I can point it to you.
Yeah, it was 12:15.
Came from me.
Amy?
Yeah. Poor Kristin. Everyone keeps, I think Kristin, the teacher, gets your emails.
Yes.
Cause you're Kristin one. And this email went to Kristin, the teacher.
Yes.
So.
It's probably fun for her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You should probably do something to address that. Like maybe change your email to like MBSP or something.
I'm fine with that. Yeah, cause it seems like that's been an issue. Like, I mean, I got this one and I get, I'm just concerned sometimes.
It's really the teacher's email that might need to change because Kay Clark at SC39.org, that's really done. People are gonna assume that's her all the time.
100%. I'm sure she got all the hate emails.
I haven't yet. That's probably why. I don't think I was on the town website office school board yet either. So I think that also protected me. Lucky. That's what I should be saying.
You can share some of mine with you.
Yeah. Just keep that to itself. Sorry, Steve. He shares as he can. Yeah, it's important to people. So do we need a motion also about the president? Yes.
Yeah, Kristen, I just showed you the.
Sure.
5,873,250 for proposed, 5,829,579 for the fall. Do we move them both already?
Yep.
Not the default.
We did with the default.
Oh.
No.
Okay.
We need to do that. Cause that was the $5,269 increase, net increase to default for the correction.
Correct.
For fuel.
Sure. So make a motion to. $55,671. We're moving from the default into the proposed, because it can't be included in the default. Or is it vice versa?
The, the, I'm not sure, but the default budget should be 5,829,579.
Thank you. Stated by the superintendent, make a motion to modify the default calculation.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Do they, do you have that? That's really the important question here.
Do you have the presentation, Danae? We can send that so that you have those numbers.
So what's in the presentation is correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm updating it as we, if you're, yeah, you guys are in it. I'm updating it as we, if you're, yeah, you guys are in it.
Okay, all in favor?
Cool. Presentation's good.
So I'm just, just so I'm aware, do we know why that, that, that occurred in terms of the move the 55,000 success on email? You know, that's okay. Cause she doesn't just give it, she basically says we're going to talk about it tonight.
Which 55,000?
Change between the default and proposed is now 55,671. The error results in increase, discover the error in the default calculation. I would change the budget thing. Discuss.
Oh yeah, so the, the, the net change to the default was an increase of 5,269. That's, that's from what it was before today is 5,269.
Yeah.
Amy says it's both formula corrections and removal of the fuel cap cost projection, which can't be in the default. So it used to be if we had a contract with the bus provider that included an increase, we could.
So fuel cats cannot be included in default either.
Same with the bus transportation increases.
I know with the bus, okay. It's crazy.
Because the, the legislature changed a lot two years ago to prevent us from doing that.
The thought was that defaults were artificially high because people were just packing them with stuff that, that shouldn't probably be a part of the default budget. The voter should have the right to vote on the difference between the two. This part too many dishes came out with either the proposed lower and everybody got passed to the default. Or I'm sorry, so the budget actually got passed versus the default. And versus actually truly having a voice on the change or impact to, to their hope. So we did not include it. There'd be a reason why the creation of the budget. Don't, then we're going to figure out a way to realize the $60,000.
Did you see the net change? It was 5,000 to change.
Yes, the change of what you made today. Now the difference between proposed and default total is about $43,000 that you got to make up.
It was 58,000 before. No, it's 43. So she had 55,671. So it's been reduced because we're now taking the math program out.
Yes.
Okay.
Recession.
We can recess this meeting. How does the school choice bill if it's passed?
Well, dramatically.
Yeah. I've been like thinking about it and reading about it.
So that's not, like people will lose their job. Brace the extra cost. My staff is going, that's currently staff, but we're now paying eight or $9,000 per failure in that request.
And I know at least a handful of families who would do that.
Yep. Oh, no, absolutely.
Which I'm not saying they shouldn't if they have that opportunity.
Remember, does have to be passed locally.
Yes, it's going to be passed by super majority, right?
Yes, 60%.
Our major stories here, we do have a net budget decrease in special service costs. These are represented by a reduction in out of district special services tuition. It's an increased placement in the Amherst School District Special Services Program, which affords our district some decrease in costs. We've got an investment in our food service program, which does represent modest increases to provide for competitive wages for our staff. There's been some equipment replacement needed and additional safety measures being put in place. We also have continued investment in our facilities. So there's an HVAC duct replacement project, which would be proposed for FY 2223 in two phases. And there's also the long-term capital facilities plan that we've been working on for the last, I think, 10 or so years. Yeah. Okay, with our next slide, this is just a graphic representation of the budget overview. We can move on to the default. Thank you. So our default calculation is as stated, there's some changes in tuition. First of all, it does remove the warrant article. So when you're looking at this, if you haven't seen this table before, the adopted budget would, is up at the top in that green, that top green line. And from there, we, we follow the column down with, with the factors in play. So we have tuition that represents 1.6%. We have some salaries and contractual wages. There's our apportionment of the SAU 39 budget, food service, other employer paid benefits. Transportation, regular and special ed is included in that line. Special education, there's that savings that we talked about at the last slide. And then everything else, which is negligible. So the subtotal changes to the default are $65,172. And that represents that 1.1% change. Reduction. Okay. In the appropriation comparison, this is just FY 22 to 23 and shows you the difference and that percent, just so you can see how it was calculated. The warrant article line remains consistent year to year, so that's no surprise. But again, there's our 0.4% decrease. With the proposed budget calculation, again, we're looking at, at a similar table. You'll see the proposed budget in that top of blue line. Then we have the lines that are in play here. So we've got technology, some classroom supplies and materials, facilities, and again, everything else. The subtotal of changes to the, from the default to the proposed is five, I'm sorry, 58,671. Comparison by fund would be our next slide, which again, shows you FY 22 to 23. The fund is represented on the left. The change in dollars is represented on the right and the percent change also on the far right. Just another way to show you that, that 0.4% decrease. For everybody who likes a good pie chart, this slide is for you. I'm not going to go over it, but you can see what's here. The, the bulk of our pie chart is made up of salaries, which is that big blue piece. The red piece is benefits. Tuition to the Emmer School District is that big orange piece of the pie. Contracted services is that goldenrod or marigold color. We've got transportation in green. And then the other smaller pieces are represented by other tuition, food services and some grants. Moving on to our staffing levels, you're going to see that there's consistency here. There's no major story. We're staying at the same number of teachers. Our ratio is decreasing slightly because of a slight projection in a lower number of students. 216 students this year to propose to 14 next year. Things are staying nice and stable. For our certified staffing, again, there's no major story here. Everything is staying consistent FY 22 to 23. You will notice on that school psychologist line, which is three lines up from the bottom. If you look across, you'll see that zero for many years and then it shifted to 0.4 last year. That's simply a shift in contracted, like was a contracted service provider and now they're just on staff. So that's the only difference there. It's not an added position. It was simply a change in how we paid for it. With our non-certified staffing, again, no major story here FY 22 to 23. We're staying consistent at 11.5 total. We again, this year are not proposing any classroom assistance. All of our classroom assistants and aides are tied to IEPs. Okay. Moving on to our special warrant article review. This is article number three. This is one that you've heard many times in the past. Sheldon Mont Vernon School District raised and appropriate $50,000 from the year end unassigned fund balance, which is a surplus. If it is available on June 30th, 2022, to be added to the school property maintenance expendable trust fund, which was established in March 2007. Majority vote is required. The next slide shows our long-term facilities plan and why this warrant article is requested. These are the, the upcoming, well, the roof is already completed, but the other three lines on here would be the next three projects on the list. So the HVAC duct replacement would be slated for FY 2223 in two phases. That is a $247,000 project. There's playground equipment, which would be slated for FY 28 several years out in the future. But again, with our, with funding this particular, this fund, this trust, it essentially allows us to absorb the costs without there being huge bumps in our tax rate. The fire alarm system is again a bit further out at $140,000, but these are the things that are on the horizon. The next slide will bring us a little bit deeper into this HVAC duct replacement project that's again scheduled for FY 2223. The phases are listed in the table and the funding source is also listed. So the expendable trust fund would not be the only source of funding for this project. We should be able to apply some SR3 funds to meet the need here as well. So the targeted replacement is FY 2223, total estimated cost 247,000 with 55,000 of that coming from the SR3 grants. And the remainder of 192,000 coming from our trust. Moving on to the next slide, we've got our overall funding plan. So this is that long-term planning that we're talking about. And what you see here is the fiscal year on the left. Our starting balance is in the upper right corner at 311,000. In FY 21, the fund was, was funded at $50,000. FY 22, we've already seen, we've seen the roof replacement project completed. So we have, we're down to 109,000. And we have that beginning phase of the HVAC duct replacement at 95,000. So if the fund is again, is again funded at $50,000, you'll see the balance and the withdrawals as the table goes on. The next slides shows several items that were put up for board consideration that are not included in the proposed budget. There are things like furniture, fixtures, some equipment, essentially some furniture upgrades and also some technology. Here we are with a quick recap. This is a review of the budget process and the next steps. Just to give you an idea of the timeframe, we started this process back in October. We were presented with the budget by the superintendent and the business administrator. We've had a period where there were review meetings and questions were submitted. The school board was able to do a pretty comprehensive review all throughout that time. Unfortunately, this year we did not have a budget committee, so we don't have anyone to represent that this evening. I think we'd like to think that because the process has been so transparent the last few years, that there's growing confidence in the community about our budget process. And a knowledge that if a community member has a concern, they can present it to a school board member and we'll address it. So we are thankful for that, but always open to having people on the budget committee to review this process with us. So tonight we are at our public hearing. The next steps will be February 9th, which is the deliberative session and then voting, which happens on March 8th. So I'm going to turn this over. Do we have any board comments before we open up public time? Any administrative comments before we open up public time?
I, I would just like to commend the board for being on top of this budgeting process in such depth. And I think it is a good sign that there's no controversy surrounding the budget and that we've developed a very consistent process. That's been a very consistent expectation from the community is being met. And that's a very good sign. So I want to commend the board for that leadership.
Thank you. Thank you. So we'll go ahead and open this up for, for public time. We do have a few members of the public present. We're happy to have you. So you can just come up to the mic, state your name, the street that you live on and.
Tom Driscoll, Nine Sean Drive. So a couple of questions. Good job, by the way. In the, one of the early slides, you mentioned the increase at Amherst for the tuition. Is that a net including any of the tuition that's coming in? How is that being accounted? There are still students from Amherst in here, being tuitioned here.
Tom, I didn't hear your entire question. Can you get a little closer to the mic? I'm sorry with.
So my question was, it, the, yeah, the increase, is that net of any tuition that's coming in this direction?
Yes.
Okay. And then can you flip a couple of slides where you, where you show the, basically the, the increase of the proposed? Right there. So all the different, you know, that only really adds up to 42. So there's just a whole bunch of miscellaneous that adds up to the balance.
No, this, this bottom line number here should say 43,671. Yeah. So this was an error on my part. I didn't correct before. And I knew with our attendees today that there would be someone who picked that up.
Somebody would add them, do up, do the math. Okay, it didn't, it did, I figured that maybe it was 58 and it was missing. Okay. And then the last, can you go to the, the staffing, not the teacher? One more. Right there. So we still, we have three special ed teachers, right? So I'm assuming, and I know, you know, there's, there's things that you can't share, but that you can, that the requirements for three, right? So that if we had all of the IEPs added up, that it would require the full three teacher, the full three.
Yeah, and actually the, the board had a non-public session with the special education director several months ago to review just that information.
So it can be justified that we need the three. And then likewise for the, for the special ed aides, right? Those are all required.
Yes.
101 aides. Okay. No further questions. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you for your questions and comments. Any other public comment? Looking at you. Okay, we're good. Thank you. Any other comments from the board or things you'd like to highlight?
Yeah, I'm just going to add a quick comment with regards to this year's budget. So the school board was very cognizant of the fact that this community is going to be going through some pretty sizable capital projects over the course of the next couple of years. And so we met at the beginning of this process, committed to leaving this, 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 this budgetary season with a bare bones, minimal increase budget as best as we possibly could within all the components that we can control. And I think we owe that to the community to be very respectful, that there are other areas of our community that may need more access to the limited tax resources that we have. And so we wanted to be very respectful of that. And so when we take a look at the budget and we see the differences between the proposed and the default, they literally are absolute needs. It's the additional of replacement of technology pieces. It's the classroom supplies. It's the facility components that we need to make sure that we go ahead and capture. And that is literally what's incorporated in, in the difference between the default and the proposed. So as a board member, I want to thank my fellow board members and hopefully next year, we can get members of the community to come forward and help us with this process and serve on the budget committee. Because I think that extra set of eyes or that lens can also share the story of how we're trying to make sure that this process is not only transparent, but really respectful of our other agencies in our community, that they're going to be having some pretty sizable requests over the course of the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other comments from the board? No, we're good. Any other comments from our administrative team? And I did want to acknowledge that our principal, Tom Leclerc, was able to join us at the end of the table. He wasn't here when we made introductions in the beginning. So thank you. So I think with that, we can call for closing the public hearing. We thank you for your attendance and your participation. Always nice to see you here. So can I have a motion to close? So can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Do I have a second? Thank you all in favor. Thank you so much.
Cut you off before, but I had a moment of panic.
Yeah, no.
So thank you all for staying. We're excited to hear from you both.
Okay. So my name is Ms. Garrity Patricia Patty. I answer either. So library. We do coding almost every month. And in December, we do the hour code with our South Vegan High School Programming Club. And that's really exciting. That's a whole day event. Kids love coding. We also use Scratch. So Scratch Junior was developed by MIT. And kids really like that because they can do a storyboard. So they can, you know, do like a book trailer or something like that. They can do a story. They can write a story using Scratch. So digital citizenship is really important. We start the focus of it at the beginning of the year because they're online a lot. So we talk about being safe, being responsible, being respectful online. We spend a lot of time doing that. Also talk about media balance, how it's important to, you know, take your time on your device, but also take some time doing something creative, read a book, do something physical. So we talk about that as well. We have a lot of discussions about that. Don't start, okay? All right. So presentation and research skills are something I also teach here. So a lot of the projects I teach start in the classroom. The assignment is given in the classroom. I work with the teachers. I provide resources, databases for the students to use in their research. I vet some resources for them, so on their H.E.T.R. project, their Native American Earth Science Unit. They have some sources that they know are good. We talk about how to find sources that are good, what are good sources of information, government sites, EDU sites. But I do vet these for them so that they don't have to Google them themselves. We also talk about Google products, Google Slides, PowerPoint, different ways to present. We talk about where they get their images and where they get their music so that whatever they use, that it's appropriate royalty-free, that they're not taking someone else's work and they're giving credit and citing the sources. So our whole fifth grade read the book Restart and I worked with their teacher. So groups of them got together and they did a book trailer. So I showed them how to do this in PowerPoint. Some of them got really into it and used the flip cams in the library to shoot their own videos, put them together. Some of them took pictures that were online or they also were able to draw their own pictures. And then they did this short little trailer, something like a minute long. So they didn't formally cite their sources, but they did give credit to their sources. So we do a lot of collaboration too. As specialists, we're always looking for opportunities to collaborate. So last year Christie and I worked on the creepy carrot story. I was remote most of last year, but I did a video of myself reading it and I gave it to her and she showed it in her art class. And then her students created their creepy carrot and they came back to tech and they gave it a little voice. This was like kindergarten or first grader, so really little, it's really short. Hey guys, I'm a carrot. I'm not harmful at all. So they love to do things like that too. They really do. So we also, in our maker space, we do some of the computer science standards, such as deconstructing computers. So they can take apart a computer and they have a chart they can look at it, compare the pieces and see if they can identify what the different parts are and what they do. So they have a lot of fun doing that. Usually fourth, fifth and sixth graders do that at least once a year. So our tech guy, whenever he's getting rid of a computer, brings it to me and I know I have something ready to go when we do a maker space. We also have a lot of Ozabots and Makimakis and different tech things that the students can use when they come to the maker space. I try to do that at least once a month, as well as some hands-on building and creative things that they can do. They have, I really put a choice out there. Third graders also usually do a book trailer with me. And this is a short one that some students did a couple of years ago. It's third graders and I usually put a QR code on the bot, on the back of all these. So they can use an iPad from the library. Other students that are interested can watch the trailers.
Wildcats playing, illustrated by Michael Rowe. Unlike many cats, tigers are good smokes and they like the water. Cheetahs use their speed to catch prey. Lovers put their food on trees where they live. Baby cheetahs like to hop on rocks to play, read to find. Wildcats.
Last but not least, of course, the library, you would think, you would expect the library to promote reading and we do. Students in this school love to read. So they're always, you know, every once in a while I'll say, you can take out as many books as you want. So they take out so many books and they love the Bookopoly challenge. A lot of them have really spent a lot of time trying to complete those challenges and get themselves a ticket to the Bookopoly box. So they're really excited about doing that. So most activities in the library are really student-focused. So I don't spend a lot of time talking during class. I usually, you know, introduce something, I'll demonstrate it for them, but then I like them to get their hands on right away because it's only 40 minutes. So I really want them to be able to do it and they feel accomplished and they enjoy learning things. So I did do, because my door, and you know about the door competition. Well, I had it decorated, but I realized that I was missing tech. So I got a lot of student volunteers from K to sixth grade and I had them each read a page of the mid. So I'm not going to show it to you now because it's six minutes long, but the QR code is on the door and it's also on the book. So if you wanted to catch it on you, want that. All right.
Thank you.
Hey, all right, you guys. I'll keep it really short. Thank you so much for giving me this time to talk about the art program. I'm, I'm just going to give you like the very, it's sort of like the very top bit of info. My goals for the art room and some of how like how that looks. So in the art room, there's always like a lot of creative chaos going on. My goal is to make sure that artists are all confident makers. They are able to think creatively. They're being safe, responsible, and they're always being respectful in the art room. Those are the prime goals. They're not only the school goals, but those are the foundational goals in the art, along with all the great art standards. But those are what I go for every day, what I'm looking for every day. So to build independence, I have the objectives on the board, expectations. So they come in and they know the routine. They know what's to expect for the day. And then when it's time to start creating, they're able to go and get the materials that they need. They know where everything is kept. And they're able to really take ownership of their time. There's their time management as well as cleanup at the end of class. Like they're, they know how to do that routine. So I give them two-minute warning and then they are cleaned up in three minutes and out the door for the next class coming in. They're all very responsible. If I'm happy, like the achievement that where they are now, they're. So some of these photos are just how the classroom might look and how they're able to move around. And you can see like kids are all doing different things at the same time. But with the creative chaos, it's, it's all going in the right direction. So that's good. So here's an example of how I tried to basically control the, like, sort of like manage, I don't want to say control, but manage some of that chaos. And one of those ways that I can do that is when I'm able to do a school-wide project. That's when everyone's using like that same theme or topic, but then it's being scaffolded. So it's age-appropriate for each group. And I was able to do that with the school-wide family friend teacher portraits. So you might remember me asking families for photos. It took forever to get it started, but we are now completing them. And you can see the second and third grade portraits. They're really just focused on proportions, like basic, like where everything goes, making sure that they understand basic facial features. But also I can fill in things like patterns and how to use their, their material. In this case, it's pastels. So we're blending new colors and mixing and trying new mediums. And for the fourth and fifth graders, we're able to build onto the proportions into more like a scientific level, like understanding where things are found on the face and using that as a basis to be able to draw anyone, including their family members. So while we do that, we also added value and making sure that they understand like the value scale and how they could make something more three-dimensional or realistic using their pencils. For my final slide on the scaffolding, it's basically your sixth graders and your K-1 kids. So you can see like the development process. So the sixth graders are able to spend more of their time not just blending new colors and creating like gradients in those backgrounds, but understanding the value and how to blend their pastels to create that value so that you can really show the form. And then your K-1 kids is just trying to remember that we have eyebrows and ears and where they go. So it's really, it's a lot of fun and I also like to put some patterns. So I try to slow them down a little bit and really try to build up that design aspect with patterns and colors.
Want to thank Mr. Leclader from modeling the K-1. You're welcome. Very flattering.
We have a few Mr. Lecladers.
You don't need a lot of brown.
We actually used your photo. I projected it on the screen. And I took out a ruler and I was like, you can divide a face in half. Let's see how it's done. So your face is like, the kid loved it. All right. So communication is really important in any aspect of your life. So it happens in the art room. There's so many skills that happen in the art room from collaborating. Communicating is one of them. And this opportunity came up with our portraits for kids to slow down, look at their process, talk about their process, decide what they liked about it, be able to really evaluate those aspects and see what they like in others, other people's works as well as encouraging other people by talking about what they like. So there's a lot of good things going on during critique. Now for two, for grades two and three, I mean, it's basic stuff. So we call it a show and share. And for show and shares, that's really just, you know, sharing your work and showing, like showing each other. It's like a show and tell. But it gets them talking about what they like and you give them the opportunity and they'll really go to town talking. So again, it's just a wonderful way to kind of finalize, but also as like that last day project, when you really want kids to put in their best effort, stopping and looking at other people's artwork to see where we all are is a great way to pull us together and then move forward. Okay, that's it.
So I am Amy Simberg. I am here this year teaching PE and I am loving it. I have a few slides to show you with some pictures of us in action, what we've been doing. We've been having a very busy year. We are moving. We are constantly in motion. To get them to slow down at times can be a struggle, but we're making it happen. This was one of my favorite days. This was one of our kindergarten classes. We were outside and we were actually doing a lesson on throwing and catching. And it was a beautiful fall day and what better way to learn than jump in a pile of leaves and let's throw some leaves around and have some fun. So it's right here. There it is all. So a little bit about how I put together my lesson plan, this wheel right here, which has a lot of information on it, but it's pretty neat. If you start at the inside of it, you can determine what skill you want to be working on that day. And as you slowly spin the wheel around and see all the different elements. For instance, if I want to put together a basketball unit with my students, I would focus on the dribbling aspect. And then I would focus on, depending on the grade level, are we moving in a zigzag pattern? Are we moving clockwise, counterclockwise? Are we working in groups with partners? Are we working alone? Are we working, what parts of our body are we working, are we twisting? So this is one of the tools that I use to devise some of my lesson plans. And one of my favorite quotes, I just had to post up there for you, that movement is a medicine for creating change in a person's physical, emotional and mental state. I am a firm believer in all aspects of wellness and I try to incorporate that each day as well, where it's not just the physical focus. I try to pull in some emotional, social aspect as well. So a little bit of what we've been doing this year. Yoga is one of my favorites to do myself as well as see my students. Just again, a great opportunity to slow down. This was the unit that we did right before Thanksgiving, turns it into a little bit with gratitude as well. And I love it because it can go across all of my grade levels. These are some of our kindergartners here and some of the upper school students. And we did a lot independent work. We did some partner yoga. There's some really fun yoga games that we can play. That was one of our, our great units. At the bottom, sport staffing is a legit sport here. And we, we did a unit's winter wonderland where this was one of the stations where students could work in small groups and build ice castles. And so at the end of the class, it turned out to be their favorite stations, where all of the students jump on the stage and just put together the biggest ice castle that they could create. And then just a few other, I believe this was our snow shoeing station over here. We have the girls on stilts and throwing snowballs with the scarves. So we were focusing on some teamwork built into these lessons as well. I feel very strongly that building our students' confidence, again, physically, emotionally, are not a big part of our lessons each day. We did a unit at the top left here, pickleball or pickle mitten. That was really fun. It got the teamwork going, pulled in some sportsmanship. The lower one here, we're doing a volleyball unit and we found this huge beach ball to use. So we mixed up some of the different manipulators we were using, add a little different element to it. And we pulled out the rock wall this year. That was one of our winter wonderland stations as well, where we were climbing on ice mountains. So that was another. So if we're having a great year, we are, like I said, we are, we are in constant motion. It's a busy time in that gymnasium. It's, it's loud at times, but to see the students involved and hopefully trying some new things and inspiring them to think fitness, health, think about how that could eventually turn into some, you know, lifelong learning year. So.
It's Jacqueline Ward. So nice to meet you. Thank you guys for staying late. I have less video content and more experiential content. And after all, music. And after all, music is an experience. Music is a language in itself. In fact, I usually sing my directions to my students. I don't normally introduce myself like this to other adults. Sorry. Every single grade I start off by telling them how to move, how to sit, what to grab by using my singing voice. There's a lot of talking all day and listening to the human voice speaking, but not as much singing. So it really gets their attention very quickly. We're often moving, we're often just transitioning to a new um, activity with music. On your way out, please take a look at the bulletin board that is. Close to the teachers or not sure, on, on the way, I hope you'll see it does say music on top. That's my bulletin board. There is a QR code for a um. Experiential guided imagery um, activity for all of you to enjoy along with. Your, what your children have been able to experience, what the students have been able to experience. There's a particular song that we listened to and feel free to jump in and do that yourself. Um, and I gave them. A moment to self-regulate by listening to a two and a half minute song. And some beautiful, beautiful creative work came out of them from the time that the music did the work, if that makes sense. I'm going to ask everyone to get a spark. Usually. I say you get what you get and you don't get upset. I'm gonna let you choose if you want to choose. Circle, circle, make a circle. It has a beginning, it has no end. Circle, circle, make a circle. Round and round and round and round and round, my friends. A sign language, my friends. We're learning sign language while we move to the music. Feel free to make a circle. Circle, circle, make a circle. It has the beginning, it has no end. Circle, circle, slow motion circle. Round and around and around and around and around. Sit down. They're usually not sitting down. Motion right there, slowing down. They know what to do. I asked three volunteers to make some soup with me. Ya da da da. This is our soup stirring song. You don't have to sing along. Normally, the students do. I'll start off with water. It's magical musical soup. Everyone grab some water. Now stir it, stir it up. Self-regulation. This really helps. By now, they're all sitting in the dots. That may run as a food job. Some ingredients. Couple of friends want to join us. It's okay. Right now, what's happening is improvisational singing, composing, self-regulation, following directions. The list goes on and on. Let's all sing with our friend. Now we can copy what we just heard. Carrots. What's all out of those? Carrots. Stir them, stir them up. Two more. Really, it is up to you if anyone wants to. Thank you very much. Um, I would like to just say thank you for this opportunity for me to be able to use what is my favorite form of relaxation. Entertainment, enjoyment, regulation, language. Music is by far very helpful, very motivational. For me, I use it for coping. I'm actually studying to be a music therapist that I want to incorporate into the education field. And hopefully you enjoyed this interactional experience. I will work on getting more um, video because the students do jump right in and sing along. Play along with you instruments. There's tons of instruments that were already provided. You should check out the closet. Um, up on the stage in the right, it's just chock full. So I'm excited to get going. This is my instrument of choice sometimes that I have them move with to get started. And then I bring out the big guns, but sometimes I don't start with the big guns because sometimes they get broken. So we. Um, and thank you so much for joining me today. Yeah, you don't know this question.
You guys were great.
Does anyone have any questions of any of us?
I'm really proud of this group of, of teachers and uh, you guys are elevating the quality of these programs. That's, that's very obvious to me. So very proud of you all. Thank you.
And we've had a really hard time um, filling out our specialist team over the years. We've had a lot of turnover because they're part-time positions and it's, we're so lucky. Um, it, it, you know, we began the year without a music teacher and um, you know, looked for a PE teacher to fill in for the year and. Didn't have a Spanish teacher right up until almost the start of this whole year. And I'm just so excited to have such a strong specialist team and. Really provide our students with such great enrichment and just the creativity and, and um. Really the break from the traditional academics, but they're learning so much, not just um, having that, that time in a, a different modality. For students, but just a different outlet and a different way of learning is so important for them. So we're so lucky to have this specialist team.
The, the other thing I want to just say too is very collaborative. This team, very collaborative. I see them all the time in each other's rooms, having conversations about how to just improve, get better and continue um. Meeting the needs uh, as best we can uh, for students in a number of different uh, like you say, modalities. So. Um, thank you all. Thank you all for uh, staying through tonight and.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Yeah. So I actually, I would never go a meeting without asking. You know, one thing that I, I can't emphasize enough about, you know, clearly what really stood out is, is your passion about your topic. Right? So yeah, this may be a new career for you. I know this is your first time or you could be here a long time. Don't feel so scary. You have that clear distinctive passion. So the teachers that do our, our K through uh, sixth grade programs, they build the foundation, right? They build the building blocks, the walls. The roof of the house to get kids ready for the next. You guys actually leave the fabric. And you go ahead and you create opportunities for kids that, you know what? I wasn't good at Spanish. I never even thought of Spanish, but you know what? This is a passion of mine. Right? Music, like who knows? Like some kid starts off playing the trumpet or trombone or, or singing in a choir or gym, like yoga, going out and. In, 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 into that sort of approach, right? So everything you guys bring to the table is really creating that awesome fabric that creates a well-rounded person. So that passion is not only palpable tonight, but as a parent and, and as a community member, I thank you for actually really stepping out and, and, and joining us, right? This is a very special place that you guys have seen that firsthand. Um, and the fact that you guys are coming up here and, and to be honest with you, giving us your time. Because that's really what it is, you know, a point four, point five position uh, is tough, right? It's tough to go ahead and make that work sometimes, but. Really is, it's, it's, it's a big thank you for, for, for me. So thank you very much for that. Um, but I do want to go through one by one and just ask a, a couple of questions if that's okay. We're starting off obviously with the Spanish program. Just being your first year here. Has anything surprised you about sort of your interaction with the kids and diving down in and trying to teach a, a first grader versus a, a sixth grader?
So I have three kids of my own. And so they are nine, six, and well, he's about to turn two. And so I came in thinking, oh, I know the ages of my children. So I'll be able to know exactly how to teach those. Those um, for me, the, the most challenging have been um, second, third and fourth grades. And the easier ones have been the older ones and the very young ones. So that's been a little bit of a surprise for me. Um, but I'm still working on, on how to reach those mid, that middle group. I think that the biggest challenge is that sometimes. Because Spanish is a little less special, the idea is, oh, this is not academic. So I'm just going to go into the classrooms and uh, my brain can just shut off. So it has to be the correct mix of fun and um, something different every time. And you have to sort of sneak in or weave in um, the lesson so that they're actually getting something of it.
That's awesome. And we really stand out because there's not a lot of elementary programs in this area, let alone the state that offer Spanish program. So.
That's what drew me to this, um, this district and specifically the school. Because I learned Spanish when I was, well, my dad has always spoken it, but I was relocated to Guatemala when I was four. And that is when I was able to capture the best accent. And so having kids start at five and even my kids, because they started so young, they have the best ear for it. Um, they're able to follow it easier. Their brains don't shut off when they decide, oh, I don't understand that word. So I don't get it. Never mind. So because of that, your students here have a much different approach to Spanish. They're much more open-minded about it.
That's awesome.
In my opinion, starting it in the middle school is a mistake.
That's surprising for a town in southern New Hampshire.
Yes.
Twenty-five hundred people and, and we're really big. So thank you.
Yeah.
Um, moving on to art, actually. One of the cool things about sort of our program is, is how you get to interject into classroom curriculum, right? So.
Yes.
Like Mrs. Garrity had said, you know, working on.
Yeah.
You know, Egyptian pyramids. I think what type of collaboration are you doing with?
I thought you were just going to say me because next week we're starting in Egypt. We're making cartouches with the sixth graders. So I've been talking with. With Dawn to um, get like a more in-depth Egypt sort of background. Like I don't like to just present. You know, like a basic clay project, like clay slab project or 2D relief. I want to actually like bring the kids to Egypt and see actual cartouches. So that they, they like can experience it in an, in another um, sort of way. Um, rather than just pictures, but I can watch a video about it and actually see the like mummies and go there. So I was just talking to Patty, actually, when I saw her um, slideshow, like, doesn't our district have some kind of thing? Like an app that I can instead of using like YouTube? So um, so this is how we all work together to build a better lesson. For the students. So um, we were also talking, I was like, oh my gosh, you have makey makey stuff. Why don't we do? Why don't I do sculptures with my fifth graders and then you can use the makey makeys and put it together? Like that, that would just be awesome for the kids. Um, so we're always looking at how we can sort of um, bring our topics together. Uh, Jackie and I were talking about, she's going to be doing the carnival, animal carnival. Yeah. This is one of those things like, I don't know anything about that, but I know that I want to make animal masks for them so that they can, they can do this whole celebration. That or else why don't we do some sort of like um, background, like 2D, like illustrations of the musical? So what that would entail is me understanding what Peter and the Wolf is all about so that I can present it to the kids during art correctly, right? Because you don't want to pretend like. Yeah, I want to know what I'm doing. So um, talking to Jackie, working out what Peter and the Wolf is all about. Presenting it so that the kids are excited about it. And then they, maybe some of the younger kids make illustrations. And then we do a slideshow. So that way, when they present the music, it's playing in the background. I mean, like, I like to think about how everything connects. Art is one of those things that uses all the different um, disciplines and I see it as not just art. I see it as multi-disciplinary topic. So I'm always trying to throw things in.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a lot of fun doing it. Thank you.
Um, music. So you know, obviously the, the lesson that you displayed uh, was new to me. I've never done a stir. So thank you for that. Um, in terms of like, uh, you know, the, the process of coming in a little bit later in the year, right? So kids, you know, passionate about music, maybe in the upper grades, maybe you've been a little bit disappointed. What type of transition were you able to successfully with the beginning? Were there any obstacles that you saw right off the bat? Um, are you, do you feel that you're behind based on your experience?
Good question. I definitely want to see more um. Understanding, educationally speaking of just notation and music. Those are, I mean, small potatoes when it comes to like. How music affects us and, and how um, we benefit from music. But I do feel like they need to go into the upper grades and the middle school and high school and just knowing some of those basics. So I'm kind of still. You know, trying to figure out where everybody's at. Um, for me, one of the major things was getting everyone on the same page. Um, physically, because being on a stage, there were, there were getting some challenges, just making sure everyone was regulated and safe. Um, and having that space now with the um. Uh, the rug is super helpful. Having them on the chairs, I have actually kind of mixed that because often they would scooch backwards as far as they could go. It's fun to see, you know. And give me a heart attack. And so um, I have just noticed it's, it's a matter of getting them to understand. Um, it's like what you said, that yes, that there's a time to play and there's a time to learn. So we, we work on switching hats. I think as well the grades too. Okay. Now we're going to put on our feelings hat. We're going to put on our facts hat. And I kind of start off with the facts. And then we move on to the feelings and sometimes go back to the facts. That's where we're learning some of the content and some of the actual educational aspects of music. Um, but I always try to keep it coming back to fun and play because that is how they learn. Um, and keeping them, um, especially just such a wide age range, um, keeping them all on the same. Um, content hasn't always worked. We just introduced the orchestra where we're going to get to Peter and the Wolf. So there's just different um, challenges that I'm working out with how to engage each class. Because it goes uh, sixth grade, fourth grade, third grade, fifth grade, lunch breaks, seventh grade, first grade. You know, it's, it's fun, but it's a big challenge for me just to make sure that I can stay on top of, on keeping them engaged, keeping them. Um, active and enjoying and also learn.
That's awesome. Thank you. Let's go to gym next, right? So you know, kids come in there, they're really excited. Oh my God, we get to burn off some energy. Can't go outside now because it's really, really cold. Like what are some of the things, the big projects that you've got between now and the end of the year? I knew a couple of years ago, we tried to do an after-school program. We've got an after-school program now. I don't know if that's kind of in the, like, what are some of the big things you're thinking about between now and, and, and June?
Yeah. So I have a couple of fun ideas lined up, one being the Winter Olympics are coming. So we're going to do a, a nice little Winter Olympics lesson um, where we're going to get creative and curling. We're going to use bean bags and. Well, um, we have not done floor hockey yet. We'll like, we'll introduce some floor hockey, scooter hockey. Um, so I, and, and tie it in with, you know, Beijing as well and pull it all together.
Get some DJ speakers blasting.
February, I also like to focus on the kids' heart challenge. So I will do a lesson on um, cardiovascular health and. Tie in some more health related to your heart, cardiovascular system. Um, so those are a couple of ideas that are on the agenda coming up and then hopefully later in the year, a field day. Um, getting back outside. I love the Red Sox. So I plan to do an opening day, introduce um. But sort of a baseball, whistle ball unit, tie that in with um, opening day for the Red Sox. So.
I can make a suggestion. Reach out to uh, our principal here and have a little basketball competition.
We can do that. Yeah. I was in there for a relay recently. Uh, it was pretty good. Uh, I will say Amy was uh, right there, like the kids decorator. Left her dignity right at the door.
I love it. I'm, I'm right up there with some.
Amy also had probably my favorite door for the door decorating contest. Uh, it was Santa Claus lifting cookies with the dumplings. Very well done. Very well done. So.
I think we used to have a sixth grade versus teachers, didn't we?
Yeah.
Basketball game.
And then second to last question, um, like you get to touch everybody in this building, just because of what you do and everybody comes in.
So exciting.
But what other resources do you use outside of them? Do you leverage a lot of relationship building with the town library, with local school libraries? Like how does that?
Yeah. So I actually um, work part-time in New Boston Library. So I'm, I'm there. I work with those librarians. Um, and I'm very. Close in collaboration with the Mount Vernon Village Library. Um, we do a field trip in the spring where we bring everyone there. We talk about our summer reading program. And Ms. Joanne does a great job with that. So Ms. Joanne and Bonnie talk about the summer reading program and last year we had a challenge. Where we asked students to read two books over the summer. So a lot of them did that. And Ms. Joanne does come into school twice a week. I believe she comes in on Tuesdays with kindergartners. So we try to do as much as we can. I have a lot of learning communities. Librarians are great. Tech people are great. I have a lot of communities that I reach out to and I'm a member of. So we, um, if we have any challenges, we always help each other and collaborate and come up with some good ideas. So, but I really enjoy collaborating with the teachers. Um, we um, most recently, I've been doing a lot with fifth grade besides the book trailers. They were learning about inventors. So we did a quick little research project on inventors because they were going to do a Shark Tank inventor thing in their classroom. But I had them, I put them into groups in the classroom and just in forty minutes, they learnt about some unique inventors, the inventor of Legos, popsicles. Minecraft, just some inventors that aren't as well-known. And they did some research on them using our databases in the library. So they quickly were able to learn things. And present them to the class. So I like to do things like that, that. So I like to do things like that that tie into what they're doing in the classroom to kind of reinforce what they're already learning. So I I always like to know what the teachers are doing.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
My very last request of the five of you is maybe you can collaborate with the principal to identify. Like the top ten list, the the wish list, the things that you think could best help you do what you do best, do better. And once we identify what that top ten list would be, give it to him, because I know I'm gonna steal an idea from him, so please forgive me, guys. Um, they did this great outreach to the community about recognizing a teacher, um, and they created a wishlist on Amazon. And random people from the community out bought that as well. And so as a board, like, I would love to know what you guys need, because I don't wanna call it, this is. Um, the overlooked side of the school, because people always think of, oh, the third grade teacher, the sixth grade teacher, boom, boom, boom. You guys have played such an important role in in the well-rounded education of our kids. I wanna make sure you guys are are recognized for that as well. So if you can work with him, identify ten things, whatever they are. Let us know and then we're gonna work really hard, we'll work with the PTA um, to to really serve as your advocate, see if you can get that stuff. And bought in in your in your hands, so you can do your job.
To buy or program changes that we're requesting?
Well, programming is more on the Christine's side, so like. So like that was good, there's a whole formal structure to to curriculum, but if you said, you know what? I really need a flip chart that's got like English and Spanish right next to me and and, you know, interchangeable, I don't I don't even know if that exists. Like, let us know that. Tom can come up with that list and give it to us maybe in in February or March, and then we're gonna try to make that stuff happen. So like again, things that you can think of, ten items, ten things that you think will help you do your job. That's awesome. We'll talk in our.
It was, it was a pleasure getting to sort of informally meet everyone. Um, so thank you for that opportunity.
Could you just introduce yourself so that I know who you are?
I'm Sarah Lawrence, I'm the school board chair. Um, my kids went through here, I've got sophomore at high school right now, I'm one who graduated.
Okay.
I'm Krista Clark, I've got Lyra Clark.
Oh, hi.
Uh, Jessica Hinckley, I only have one here now in sixth grade, Oliver.
Oliver.
Yeah.
And Steve O'Keefe, my kids graduated from here a couple of years ago and just a very passionate parents.
Thank you.
That's Danae, she's. She was our minute taker. Yeah.
Thanks for doing.
Thank you, guys.
Christine has been volunteering my services.
I'm sorry. Well, kind of. So, well. I said, you need to find someone who has a cricket, because we would be able to afford the T-shirts and so on, and she said, hey, that PTA person who's on the board? I don't know who she is, she has one, I said, I know who she is.
I do not have one.
Oh, you don't have a cricket?
But.
My sister-in-law does and she makes T-shirts all the time and.
I told her we've worked it, we've figured it out.
I know several parents with you.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We wanna make T-shirts for um, drama and theater, or the theater club and the stage crew.
So. Yeah, I told her I would do it, I was like, I have to be ironed on, because I don't have a cricket, but I'm happy to do it, so.
Yeah.
We're working it out.
Okay.
It's like Christine, Mo.
Well, she told me you haven't, she was like, I, there's a parent that has a cricket and she starts, and I'm like, that's just.
First, it was like, she reaching out, something like, did Oliver sign up to do this?
Oh, yes. And I I probably should have reached out to you, but she was like, oh, no, I'll send her an email and I gave her your email address, so.
Oliver told me she's joining the draft club, I was like, oh, no, you aren't, I hear. We're not all about.
Ollie did not want to. He's like the biggest ham.
Well, thank you guys for setting me that up. Awesome.
That was one of like the most passionate presentations.
Unbelievable specialist.
So excited and passionate, I loved it.
We really are so lucky, like to have part-time specialists.
Everybody have to full-time and set in.
I know, and it's hard with something like music.
Yeah.
Because like a PE, that's an easy one, like. Kids can use more PE, all the, like, I'd love to get more PE in, but to have art or music more than twice a week.
Yeah, it's hard.
That is hard to fit in.
Yeah, I was telling them how transformative it was for my daughter, because she did a report on Red Candace. And she may gave her book to Patty's Garrity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To keep for other kids to check out. And so she kept checking every week to see if kids checked it out, and she was so encouraging for her. So now she's writing comic books at home, so she's using the art and the stories, but just that encouragement and giving for that time was. So, so impactful.
That's awesome.
Okay.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, uh, we are at the uh, consent agenda approval. We've got two items on our consent agenda, which are the draft minutes from December second and our facilities update. Do we have any discussion on that or any?
Just an update on the water situation?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, uh, would you guys feel about taking a quick walk?
You probably don't need to walk, but I.
Well, well, I'll recap. You're welcome to.
We were thankful to the fire department, they helped us out that day, because if you remember, that was the day that. Uh, we were watching for freezing rain and the freezing rain occurred like, you know, minutes after the high school, middle school got. We couldn't even send kids home that day if we wanted to, so. And then they have no water that day, that was a little scary.
Hence the fire department.
And our principal is already.
It's a fun day.
Yes, it is, yes. We started, we started with it, so. Thanks for taking the field trip.
Thanks for the field trip.
And what happened with the separate system, low level?
Oh, yeah.
You know, I didn't. You know, I actually didn't hear the solution or what happened with that, so I'll I'll check with Roger. I'm assuming it was something minor because I didn't hear anything about it, so. My guess is probably a float was bad in the tank, but I don't know that for sure.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? Thank you, any discussion?
Okay, uh, I will keep it brief tonight, I know we're a little behind and um, again, thank you to our UATR specials team for their presentation tonight. Um, so in my report, just uh, we've had some, some great community uh, over the past month. Uh, leading up to and uh, up to the holiday break. Um, we had our door decorating contest, we had a number of community folks come out to um, vote on our doors, actually. Uh, including the library, the village uh, store actually came out. Um, police fire, um, rec department, so it was, it was fun. We had a, we had a lot of folks coming through and a lot of pride spirit in the, in the school uh, out there, so that, that was great. Um, thanks to the PTA, we had our Avenue of Lights, uh, that went off really, really well and uh, thank you to our library, police department. A number of folks involved in that and uh, it was a nice night, could turn out that night. As we look ahead, uh, we are now, of course, in January and coming up on the halfway point in the year. And so we are preparing for our NIOA assessment, that'll be happening in the next couple of weeks. And uh, that's a sort of a checkpoint, halfway point, um, that'll be happening over the course of two weeks, the last week of January, first week of February. I'm gonna leave it at that, you uh, as soon saw the, saw the report and uh, if you have any questions for me. Um, things are, things are off to a really good start here and in the new year and. I have a few, a few plans for some spirit events as we get into February, so uh, we'll be talking about those uh, over the next few weeks.
Quickly, can you just touch on the uh, the home office and how our nurse is doing?
Sure.
Is there enough support there?
Yeah, so we've. Yeah, so uh, ongoing conversations, um, and certainly, you know, uh, the numbers, as we all know, are are up. Um, we continue to provide support um, in the office as as needed and, you know, as reports. Need to go out to the state or um, things need to be documented, um, some of our office staff have done that. Um, in collaboration with Ms. Deppen. Um, and so that, you know, that it's, it's really a daily conversation. Um, I, I don't think at this point, you know, much has really changed from last month. Um, you know, she continues to. Um, ju- just really depending on the day, um, there's a lot of, honestly, there's a lot of things that only Kim can do, you know? Um, but there have been some folks in the community that reached out to to assist and help. Um, we also, um, you know, if she needs overtime or more time to. To do her work, um, have talked to, talked about that. Um, so it, you know, it's an ongoing challenge, you know, and she's certainly. Um, been bearing down on that and and working real hard to to keep up with uh, all the reporting and the the numbers there, so. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't think much has really, really changed. Um, I will say, you know, I mean, our numbers in Mount Vernon have definitely spiked a little bit. Um, but I think, uh, you know, in terms of staffing and things here, it's been manageable, we've been able to uh, maintain. Um, really well over the last uh, last couple of weeks and. Um, again, a thing we watch every day, you know, continue to to pay attention to. We, we, uh, student attendant-wise, we were about thirty-five students out at the, the peak of. Last week and now we're down to um, just about twenty, a little under twenty. So starting to move in the right direction, but still we're not, you know, we know we're not out of the woods with with things like that.
And how's that going with kids who are out, like how is their transition back into the classroom, how's that going for them?
Yeah, so um. It's very much a case-by-case basis, it's very much teacher and family collaborating. Um, and I've, I've just heard a lot of stories and seen a lot of um, examples of. You know, that those conversations happening and and it really depends on the student, right? I mean, if the student is really down and out, cannot do the work, then certainly we're not gonna put that expectation out there. As they can though, we s- we work with the, with the family, the teachers have been very, very flexible and. And um, having those, having those conversations. Um, and I can tell you, I've had, I've had at my level. Um, no family come to me and say, hey, you know, my kid came back, was completely overwhelmed or was out and felt completely off the grid and. So there's a lot of sensitivity to to that and um, you know, transitioning students back in. Um, can be, can be a, a struggle for for a student, especially the upper grades, I'd say more, you know, the social dynamics, what, getting back into the flow, but. Um, I think the teachers have done a nice job of being aware of that and and wrapping around that. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions first?
I've got one in terms of like the counseling stuff, so back in August, we had talked about sort of creating that social emotional support for kids. Going through all the issues that that one would expect, reintroducing back into the classroom. Now, in light of what's going on now, thirty-five kids out of one week at a school, two hundred, it's a pretty big percentage.
Yeah.
What steps do you think we could be taking that better support those kids that, holy cow, I may get sick now and. That anxiety may return, checking back in to make sure they're comfortable and.
Yeah, I think, you know, Anna, the the counselor's in there every week. So she's having a lot of face-to-face conversations, a lot of the focus of that content that she talks about with students. And and the teacher piggybacks off of it too, but a lot. But a lot of it is around sort of managing yourself, right? Managing anxiety, managing, and she's not afraid to have those conversations very openly with students. So, you know, I've seen her go in there and if a student starts asking a question about something, she'll, she'll address that right there. She's very adaptable and very, very flexible with that. I think it's a, it's a team effort, you know, it's not just, it's not just the counselor. So I think right now our teachers are very, very much aware of, you know, students coming in and out of some of these challenges. Some, some of the kids come back, they hit the ground running, you know, there's no, there's no issue. And honestly, some of the kids, they don't really want it to, they just wanna come back in and hit the flow. Some, it takes a little more of a wraparound, you know, between the counselors, classroom teacher, and maybe even the nurse. So.
You know, I'm talking about the kids that may not be sick in at home, the kids that are sitting next to the kids that are now.
Okay.
That anxiety of, my goodness, I'm gonna transition back in, I've been away for a year because my life is in danger. Whatever sort of they thought inside of a second or a third or fourth grade or five, now they're seeing their peers disappear. Is any of that stuff coming back? And that's what I was referring to.
Okay, gotcha.
Whole emotional support thing that we promised the community.
Yeah.
You know, we talked about it in our SAE meeting. They did such a phenomenal job in the fall, just wanna make sure that that's not lost now. As we go through this huge peak now and is it gonna get worse for those? Like that stuff, that's a support piece.
Yep.
Does that make sense?
It does, it does. And. Yeah, there, yeah, every, every day we start with a morning meeting, we start with, you know, it's, it's a very like deliberate activity around just building community, kind of touching base with kids and having conversations authentically with kids, sort of where they're at in that, in that moment to frame the day and, and sort of like, you know, springboard into learning that day and so.
And I think a lot of times kids will bring things up during morning meeting because they know that that's time to be able to do that.
They do, yeah.
And with such small class sizes and those strong communities being built, I know kids often will speak openly about it. And I know our school counselor Anna has such a strong relationship with every single one of our teachers. Like if you see her during the day, she's in and out of classrooms all day.
All day.
And all over the, like, it's, it's incredible to watch and, and just, it's like she orchestrates the school. And I, I feel like, you know, kids know they can go to her, she's starting to develop strong, close relationships with students too. So I haven't, and, and, you know, I, I try to be up here as much as I can, Tom would know more. But I, I feel like I haven't seen a lot of that. And I, I know that the, you know, morning meetings are happening every morning. And I know we have the small class sizes and we've really worked to try to develop those strong relationships with students. And Anna's doing such a great job. I, I don't think it's a concern, it's something certainly for us to keep an eye on and checking.
If you could just proactively endure your weekly announcement with the parents, you, hey, if you've got a concern about your kid and how they're adapting to the current environment, please reach out to yours or to the counselor. Yes, we offer that.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Anna.
Yeah, it's so interesting because I, I had to call her this week to speak with her and exactly that, she's like, I'll, I'll call you back, but I'm doing classes and I don't have to come back until after class. And I was like, okay, totally fine. And I was dropping my daughter off and she was walking in and she just stopped and checked in with me. And I was just like, oh, she is on it.
And really like orchestrating, she orchestrates the, every student in the whole school. Like I one morning went and checked in and said, hey, just wanted to check in on this situation. She goes, oh, already done. I was like, oh, it's like, wow, okay.
Yeah, she's on, she's, she was on it. And, and like you say, too, having those conversations with teachers. But yeah, definitely a good, good reminder. Yep.
And the last question, I don't expect you're gonna know, Tom, but do we know what the actual final count was for our enrollment at the middle school on October first?
A minute.
We're gonna build the tuition.
I have it, I did have Kelly separate that out, so I can get it in just a minute. Yeah.
You can send it to me as well.
Any other questions for Tom?
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
We are up to our first reading of the policy BDD, which we have seen at the SAE board level. So there's no changes from that. Unless there's any concern about it, I would accept a motion to adopt policy BDD.
I got one question, is this the policy that's been changed? Is this, this board staff communications?
This is the one that there was discussion about removing redup性和, but then it was discussed early redup性和.
I'm not sure this was changed. I know they've moved a couple of policies that we've all approved and adopted.
Yeah, I don't believe this is wrong.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. I made a motion to accept the policy BDD. And we treat the SAE meeting as the first reading, this will be the second to adopt.
Sure.
Just as an FYI, the trailer part, it does say that it was moved to all four districts after. Preparations for our deliberative session. Thank you, updated the slides.
I sent it to you, I fixed the one slide that I had wrong. Still can't get over Congress to do a map like that, I knew he was doing. See it happening.
If there was a slide you were gonna miss, it had to be that one.
Right.
Anyone have any suggestions on the flow of the slides?
So do we have to make a motion to adopt?
You do, so now that you've had your public hearing, you do adopt that budget in one hour, it's forward to deliberate session.
It's just very.
I should make sure the tax rate slides in.
Amy said that she'll include that, so that is on her task list. Others, I thought the flow besides was fine. So the tax rate would be the twenty-two to twenty-three, like prepared to.
No, it'd be like an estimate of what the tax rate impact would be of the budget.
Would it be helpful to show what it was previously? It would, okay, that's, I think that would be impactful.
So.
So I made a motion to move, is it to move?
Yeah, to move the budget and, and the special article to the deliberate session.
And the special article as presented. I have to see what's public here.
Second. Discussion, none on our favor? I have no public for public input, unfortunately. But we welcome public input. I do believe we have a non-public session, so can I just have a motion to enter not public to have the RSE?
Ninety-one, A three two subsection A.
Anyone wanna make that motion? All in favor?
We'll call.
We'll call, sorry. I think they asked, of course, yes, questions. So we are.